All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our special meeting today on Tuesday, June 22nd. It's five o'clock. We'll call, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennison.
Here.
Droads.
Here.
Lombardo.
Here.
Schooler.
Here.
Mayor Abel.
Here. We'll start off with our department reports. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the PowerPoint is pulling up, I'm going to start out this evening with the staff report and before opening it up to questions for the public, like the opportunity for Stephanie with the Dolan Group to introduce herself, talk about the team a little bit, and then after any public comments, either town staff or Stephanie will be happy to answer questions at that time.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fujimura. I'm a principal with Dolan Group Architects.
Hey, hang on just a second, Stephanie.
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
Hang on. So can we remove everything from the screen at this point except for the PowerPoint, please? Thank you. The recommended action this evening is the Town Council authorizes the Town Manager to enter into a professional services agreement with the Dolan Group to provide project management services for Proposition 68, Town of Yucca Valley Aquatics and Recreation Center, in the amount not to exceed $628,500, authorizing the Town Manager, Town Attorney, and the Mayor to sign all necessary documents to complete the project. A little bit of background and history, Town went out with the RFP in March. We were unsuccessful in bringing onboard qualified candidates as reviewed by staff at that time. Council reauthorized that process on April 20th, and as a result of that second process, four proposals were submitted. On May 12th, that included the Dolan Group, Griffin Structures, Hunton Strategic Partners, and Tilden Coil Constructors. Those were the four proposals received. Based upon the review of those, two of those four proposers were identified to proceed forward with the interview process. That interview process took place on June 3rd, and your Town Committee consisted of the Town Manager, Deputy Town Manager, Public Works Director, Community Services Manager, Human Resources, Town Clerk, and the Recreation Coordinator over the aquatics program. Based upon those interviews, the Evaluation Committee determined that the Dolan Group demonstrated to be the best suited to provide project management services for the Town on this particular project. If anyone's had the chance to review within the scope of work that was proposed, these are kind of, I'll call them the 30,000-foot elevation guiding principles for this project. The Dolan Group is going to be the project lead and the Town Representative for this project. They will be functioning and acting as an extension of Town Staff, but they are bringing onboard the expertise of aquatics facilities as well as architecture, which your Town Staff team does not have. They're going to be managing the process. The Project Manager is responsible for managing the cost and controlling the time on a project. The Project Manager acts as the liaison between Town Staff and the Design Team. The Town Team that I referenced earlier in terms of the interview process, that's going to be the Town Representative Group throughout the entire design and construction of this project. So it's not just going to be someone on the engineering side or the public works side, but it's going to be including the Town Manager's office, recreation operations, risk management and liability, and all of those ongoing functions. In terms of meeting expectations and schedules, the Project Manager must have a thorough understanding of the Town's objectives, the project goals, deadlines, and the required scopes of work in order to keep this project moving and to have it meet our goals and to come in on budget. Managing the total project budget, the Project Manager will manage the project. We have $20 million for, slightly less than $20 million now, for both design and construction. And so evaluation of the alternatives for delivering the best facility for the Town possible within that budget is critical. Want to revisit now what we're going to start out with in the process. Goes back to the Town Council direction, and that was the preferred alternative of the Boys and Girls Club site, and I'll come back up in a moment with what that graphic was. So both the original out of the LPA study as well as the alternatives that came out with, out of the Sequo process with NV5 and Placeworks. Dolan is going to evaluate and provide revised layouts for both the North Brim and the South Brim sites. They're going to complete a site and utility survey for those two sites that are under consideration, providing a conceptual cost estimate for each of those sites, provides the Town with the ability to complete our evaluation and make a final determination on location. As a reminder, this was the preferred design that came out of the LPA study, and then that was further refined under the Sequo process by Placeworks and NV5 with the graphic that you see here for the Boys and Girls Club site, as well as the alternative for what we refer to as Brim 2 or the north side of Little League Drive. Overall, we're anticipating this project to be a 31-month design and construction process. We'll be following the traditional design, bid, build, which the Town Council is accustomed to seeing on all of our processes. We're estimating three months in the pre-design process, 12 months of design permitting and bidding, followed by 16 months of construction. Then finally, I want to point out, while Dolan is coming in as recommended this evening to be the Project Manager, there will be separate, and those contracts will come before you, separate construction managers once the project reaches that point. Total grant funds, just kind of going back in time, $20 million. We've laid out the expenditures to date, including the recommended action this evening for this contract for services, with an estimated total expenditures of slightly more than $1 million at $1,41829, leaving approximately $18,9237. Again, that includes the numbers for this evening's recommendation. Again, the recommended action is to authorize the Town Manager to enter into the professional services agreement, as staff read at the start of this. At this point, I'd like to ask Stephanie just to state a few comments about her and her team and the delivery of the project, and then following those, we will be happy to answer any questions following public comment.
Okay, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Fujimura. I'm a principal with the Dolan Group, and I will be leading the team, which consists of both Dolan Group staff and Cummings Cost Management Specialists, to help the Town bring this project to life. So a little bit about Dolan. Dolan's a 150-person firm with five offices throughout the west coast, and we focus on developing community spaces. So along with myself and the Dolan Group team, Gregory Merkel, who is also a principal, and Erica Dicoccia, who is a senior associate, will be heading the team as Project Manager and Project Architect, and they will be daily contacts. The three of us bring a combined six decades of experience managing and successfully completing public, community, recreation, and aquatics projects, many similar in size and urban to what the Town is anticipating. Along with the three of us, we also have a dedicated project coordinator that will provide administrative and organizational support throughout the project. Cummings Cost Management is an integral part of our team, as managing and evaluating costs throughout the project is a critical portion of making this project a success. So Ellen Campbell and Keith Roberts with Cummings were specifically selected for their team because of their decades of experience and extensive knowledge with public facilities and public bid projects. And they will be managing the budgets, projects, costs, and evaluating design considerations and design estimates from your design team down the road. We believe that specifically for your future recreation and aquatics building, we're the perfect fit, just because we have both that specific facility design and process experience with, along with Cummings, who has that cost management, very successful cost management background. This will be your team from today through cutting and beyond. We don't really been switching out teams, so if at any point you guys have any questions, we will be available to chat with you and talk with you and walk you through. We're excited to work with your teams, Town Representatives, and Project Managers for this project. You have any questions? Happy to answer them.
When the team completed the interview process, every member of the team was very excited to see the proposal, to see the experience. The Dolan Group was already prepared to provide comments on work that had been previously prepared and suggestions for improvements, so they had already taken the time to look at those issues, start digging in, and assisting in refining that project to best fit the Town's needs. So it was a unanimous recommendation from the team that has brought this before the Council this evening. With that, that concludes the staff presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions following public comment.
Thank you. We'll open up to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular item?
Hello, Mayor. I have a request to speak from Ken.
All right. Hi, Ken. Just for the record, if you state your name and place of residence, I'd be appreciative.
Sure. Ken Nyquist, 6367 Hermosa Avenue, Yucca Valley. If you can't understand me, I'm sorry. I have a brain tumor. It doesn't work very well. Hello, Mr. Lombardo, Mayor. First things, you know, we have an agenda here and all kinds of stuff, and three minutes goes in a heartbeat. First off, off the agenda, $6 million or whatever for converting offices over here? I was a contractor forever. That's ridiculous, no matter what. It's just ridiculous. I was on the High Desert Water District Public Advisory Committee to pick WN Lyles up here and to pick MWH to put the sewer in. Me, the only citizen, the only unpaid person in the whole room. I interviewed three different times with Mark Band and Ed Music. I understand contracts. I have a problem. Mr. Yakamo explained something to me which helps me, so I'll go straight to the point. I think paying $628,500 to this company, and we have to pay for their reimbursable expenses for telephones and for reproduction, et cetera, I think it's absurd. I was a contractor forever. Why are we paying that and paying a contract manager, just like MWH hired Suket? I had nothing to do with that. I had everything to do with the rest, Mark Band, Ed Music, and myself. That's it. I guarantee you. I sent Shane, wherever he is, a letter about my streak because it was such a piece of junk. Nonetheless, I'm trying to get to the bottom line of this. It's a whole lot of money, and the license fees and assessments on 1.4. I don't know what a consultant needs anything for that. Why would they? You have a contract manager. Who's going to pull the permits? Prevailing wage. It says there's no prevailing wage. Shouldn't there be prevailing wage when it comes to the actual construction? It's a public project, and so they're in a consultant, so they don't get paid. That's cool. So the reimbursement of expenses really bothers me. The overall cost of the project at $20 million, I think, is out of line. In 1977, I worked for the city of Scottsdale, and we built swimming pools all over that town, whole aquatic centers. Our staff did it. We didn't hire anybody out. You know, I mean, that's part of being in this business. But in the end, the $20 million bucks, that's really great. I'm glad it's a grant, but it still comes out of my pocket, your pocket, and everybody else's pocket. And the cost of this library cost my family $500 if you put that in there, I mean, for the new offices. What do you need offices in there for? I could do that whole job in there for probably $80,000 bucks, you know? So that's the reality. I'm very concerned, so is my wife and all the kids in town. I talk to and say, what would you like? Well, you guys have two. I've got four seconds. That's all I have to say. I hope everybody pays attention, okay? Because in the end result, it's complicated. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Anyone online wishing to comment? All right. Excellent. We'll bring it back to staff and to the Council. Staff, do you have anything else to add?
Mayor and Council, just a few comments. Number one, those questions are excellent questions, and those questions deserve a response. So let's start out. Number one, I think the Council's well aware that the Town keeps a very, very small town employee team. That employee team, and we'll talk about on the engineering side, on a day-to-day basis, is two people deep. Those two people have to take care of the day-to-day issues, the permit issuance across the front counter, all of the citizen inquiries. They also deliver your Measure I programs, your Measure Y programs, and your special federally funded projects, whether that's Little League Drive, Onaga, North Park, coming through CDBG funds. We have a whopping two-staff people that administers and deals with all of those issues. Are there sufficient person hours in those two employees to manage a $15 million aquatic center project? Absolutely not. Those hours do not exist. Number one. Number two, does the Town Staff have the expertise of delivering a gymnasium with indoor aquatics, outdoor aquatics, splash pads? No. So when you don't have, so number one, when you don't have total staff available to provide those services, when you don't have the expertise, and as designed for decades of this organization, you contract for those services. In terms of contract value, $600,000 sounds like a very large number. But if I were to hire a Town Employee for a three-year period to manage the project, what are we going to pay for that employee? You're going to easily pay $150,000 to $200,000 a year plus benefits. So is the cost for these, for specialized professional experts through contract, is that the equivalent or similar to what we would pay for having an in-house employee help the Town deliver that project? Very much so. It's very equitable to what we'd be looking at in terms of actual employee costs. Let's take it outside the Town Organization. So when the Coachella Valley Association of Governments builds an interchange on Interstate 10, do their employees manage that project? No, they do not. Similar to us, a very small organization, they contract out for those services. You contract out because in the long run, for the organization, our total costs are going to be less when we contract for those specialized services than trying to keep Town Employees on the Town payroll to perform those functions. Again, those are excellent questions. We do look at those issues very carefully. Ken posed those, very legitimate, but I believe the Town's process of using specialized contract services helps us deliver those facilities to the community for a less cost than if we had full-time Town Staff.
Do you have a response or clarification on reimbursable expenses added on top?
So thank you. Anytime you are contracting for project management services on a $15 million project, you are going to have travel time, you're going to have, let's call it, technology expenses, whether it's phones, cell phones, a system that's set aside for a portal that's set aside for the sharing of plans and the sharing of documents. You're going to have reproduction costs. Those are all the costs of doing business. And is the payment of reimbursables by a public agency to a firm who's providing those services, is that a cost of doing business? That is a very standard cost of doing business. I think if you go back and look at any design similar to design, project management, contract the Town has awarded, there is always a reimbursables cost included, because companies aren't going to incur those costs for free. So they're either going to identify what those reimbursable costs are, or they're going to increase the amount of staff time and include those costs in the staff time of helping you deliver that project to the community. Thank you for reminding me on that question.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember questions for the firm or for staff?
Is there any questions from the public?
I already did.
I have questions.
Mike?
When we...
Mike is on? Your microphone is on?
Yes, it is. Okay. When we contract for a project manager, we are hiring a firm, not just an individual. Is that correct?
See, in this particular case, we're hiring a firm. There is a designated lead on that firm. There are other individuals who have specific tasks. They also contract with a separate company, and Stephanie had talked briefly about them, Cummings, in terms of the cost estimating for us. But yes, we're contracting with a firm.
Okay. And so members of the firm might have expertise in the best way to build a splash pad at a reduced, you know, we're kind of trying to find a way to get value for the dollars, and that's what the manager does. So they tap into the resources of their comrades to pull up the best thing for us.
Absolutely. Like any organization, they have individuals who specialize in different areas, and they pull from those expert resources within their organization when those skill sets and that professional skill set is needed.
Okay. And I have full confidence in Armando's, Armando's ability to do these things, but I don't know the last time he built a swimming pool. And I really think it's important that we want something that's going to be a landmark here in Yucca Valley. We're not going to get another shot at this for a long time. I want it to be something solid and that's going to go into the future and still look and work. So I think we need a project manager.
Thank you.
And I think that I'm happy with what we're seeing.
Councilmember Droads?
Yes, I just want to ask really quick. I have one question and one comment. For the budget, the renewables, for the renewables, is there a budget for that, or is it just kind of open-ended?
Reimbursables. No, there is, there is a budget within the scope.
Okay. And number two, I just want to say that this really seems like a great selection. Looking at their portfolio, it's really impressive, and I hope it looks, what we end up with looks something like what is in their portfolio. And I welcome Stephanie onboard. I'm going to vote yes for this, and I'm excited for this for Yucca Valley. It's really, I mean, this is another step in the many steps we've taken, and we're almost at, you know, we're getting there, and it's amazing, you know, three years from now, we could have all of this. So anyway, that's all I want to say. I'm excited about it, and I think it's a good choice.
Councilmember Dennison?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation tonight and welcome aboard Stephanie on this for giving us additional information on the LPA and the previous studies that were done. I think that's very good homework and very important in us moving this project forward successfully. And to staff, for your diligence of not accepting the earliest of replies to our RFP on this. I think the extra work that you did, which was a lot, to do more outreach beyond our normal area, and coming back with someone that presented well during the interview process. It sounds like there were some really good people at the top, as you mentioned, Griffin Construction or Structures, and then Dolan, of course. So thank you for getting us here. I appreciate it, and I look forward to the project moving forward over the next 31 months.
Mayor Pro Tem, Schooler.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I looked through the proposal, and I like the attention to detail and the qualifications of the firm. And this is the biggest, I think, project the Town has ever taken on, and it's in terms of dollars. And we certainly want an appreciation of the significance of it on all members of our team, and we welcome you, Stephanie, and thank you. I think it's a good selection for the, for the firm, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Stephanie, a couple of questions I have. First of all, thank you for joining us today via Zoom and explaining a little bit about the process. I was, you know, if we, it sounds like we're moving forward, but I think the high price tag in the long run will be beneficial for our residents, especially when you're out there value-cost engineering and you are really looking at our bids as they come in. You can tell us if we're being taken advantage of, or if it, if the quality of what work they do won't be to our standards. So I think you being that expert, being able to get us through this process will be well worth the money spent. I noticed a 16-month construction timeline. That just seems amazingly long, over a year of construction, once we are ready to start putting shovels in the ground. Is that, do you, do you see that being, taking that long?
I do. Typically, when you're doing your aquatic center, there's a ton of site work. What you don't realize is everything that's under your deck and under the slabs and under the dirt. It takes almost six months of site work just to get your infrastructure in place, and then we go vertical with the building. So 16 months is actually, it's a pretty good guess at this point. I will tell you, we did something similar for the city of Dublin, and we were closer to 22 months. It was a little bit bigger of a facility, but I think 16 months, 16 to 18 months, we can get them going and keep them going straight 16 months is a good number.
And when you're evaluating, thank you, when you're evaluating both sites, your company, you'll be able to help us decide if it's going to save us monies or it's going to be a better facility if we choose one over another?
Yes, absolutely. So that's one of the reasons we want to do this extra bit of due diligence in looking at those sites. There are specific things as far as the way the site lays out, whether it's in a flood plain, what utilities are currently running to site, and if those are sufficient for your new facility, those are all things we're going to take into account when we look at both sites. And then Cummings will come in and help us price all of that for you, so we'll have that information come back to you, and then you guys can decide what works better for both your staff, the city, or the Town, you know, and just in terms of functionality, in terms of being able to work with the Boys and Girls Club, for instance. So all of those factors will be laid out, and then we can make a well-informed decision moving forward.
Wonderful. And that's something I'm very concerned about. I want to make sure that this project is not only a blessing to the community as well as a blessing to the current Boys and Girls Club and also the programming from Tri-Valley Little League, and all of this will have an impact upon others that use the site. So we're really counting on you and your company to really evaluate us moving in a direction that will, in the long run, be a benefit to all involved, and also bring us a close or under or at a budget that is something that we can digest. So I appreciate your answers today and joining us again.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I'll look for a motion in a second.
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
We have Dennison with the motion and Lombardo with the second.
Councilmember Dennison?
Yes.
Droads?
Yes.
Lombardo?
Yes.
Schooler?
Yes.
Mayor Abel?
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you again for joining us. All right, we're going to...
Absolutely.
Go right ahead. Thank you. We're going to move on to public comments. The Town Council takes this time to consider your comments on anything of concern. Is there anyone in the public or online that wish to speak? All right. Hearing done, we'll bring it back to our staff reports and comments.
Mayor and Council, just a couple of quick updates for you before we enter into our summer break. You'll remember that based on vacation schedules, we will likely not be meeting until the second meeting in August. If something comes up, obviously, we'll go ahead and schedule a special meeting as we did this evening. A related update, we received word this week from the state of California in terms of their Proposition 68 competitive grants for Round Four. That process of evaluation is underway. The state's notified us that they would like to come out and do a site visit here on both of our applications that we have outstanding. So one application is your skate park and Shade Shelter project, some walking track improvements here at the community center. The other is ancillary work around the entire Brim complex. So we're encouraged. It's still a long shot. A number of applicants are going to go through this process, but they've asked for additional information and the opportunity to meet and discuss that in a little bit more detail. So I think that's scheduled for middle of July, and we're hopeful that that continues to move forward. Secondly, just wanted to update you on your fellow or your neighboring communities. City of 29 Palms and San Bernardino County both have had recent conversations on short-term vacation rentals, some of the pros and cons of that program that's been highlighted from community residents. And so the county met today, and I believe, I didn't catch the final action, but I believe they had an urgency order...
they had an urgency ordinance before them as an alternative, or at least an updated ordinance that may take effect in a little bit of time. But similar to 29 Palms, a good number of public comment, both in support of, I'd say generally, I'd characterize it as supportive of short-term vacation rentals, but also recognizing the number of changes that need to occur. Along those lines, you'll recollect that the town has underwent our community livability survey, and as part of that survey, we have specific questioning on short-term vacation rental issues here in the town. We know that there are a number of concerns here as well, and so we expect to get top-line results from that survey as early as this week. And so from that, then, there's a couple of other items that we're waiting for, some guidance out of the FPPC that we expect maybe at the end of this month or early next month. And so as those items are evaluated and prepared, then that will give us some direction as we come back to the council for further direction at the policy level. So I wanted to update you that that continues to move forward. We'll keep the public engaged. We know that's a topic top of mind for the entire community, and so we'll make sure that they have the opportunity to provide input where appropriate. Staff, anything else that I've missed, or that's...
Education.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Deborah.
All right. Good evening, gentlemen. As I'm sure you're aware, last Friday, CAL OSHA, the governing body for workplace, met, and they updated their latest revisions to the emergency temporary standard that was put in place in November. So I'm going to give you a summary of what the changes are, and then I'm going to provide you with what the town is going to implement, okay? So just run down those real quick. So currently, vaccinated employees are not required to wear masks while indoors except for places where California still requires them, like public transit, hospitals, and airports. Unvaccinated employees must still wear face masks in indoor settings. Face masks are not required for vaccinated or unvaccinated workers while outdoors, although they do highly encourage unvaccinated to continue to wear masks even outside. Employers must document the vaccination status of all employees, and I'll provide you how we're going to do that. Employers must provide N95 masks to unvaccinated employees who request them. Physical distancing requirements have been eliminated except in the context of a COVID outbreak. Face coverings were defined and specifically excludes items like scarves, bandanas, turtlenecks, those kinds of things. And employers may not retaliate against employees for wearing face coverings. So the town has, we're going to be implementing the following. For documentation purposes, we've chosen to complete a self-attestation form of the vaccination status. So they will be completing the form and turning it in to myself, and it's confidential, and it'll be kept in their medical file. Employees who are vaccinated will not have to wear masks while in the office setting. Employees who are unvaccinated must wear a mask when indoors unless an exception applies as provided in the CAL OSHA regulations, which there are a few. The barriers that we currently have in the offices that have them will remain in place. We will continue to conduct a monthly sanitization where we spray all the offices in the different buildings. Employees will still be required, as per our COVID prevention program, to complete a daily screening. Every day that they report to work, they have to do a little, answer a few questions just if they're exhibiting any symptoms. We do have an inventory of N95 masks that if they request them, anybody can have them. We will also continue to be operating under the standards that we have with employees call out, "Call out if you're not feeling well." Contact myself if you've been exposed to anyone with COVID-related symptoms, and also to continue to follow the CDC hygiene guidelines. So we will also post signage at all the offices that when customers, residents come in, that we will ask them if they are unvaccinated to wear a mask. So that is where we are at this point.
Thank you, Deborah. That is based on CAL OSHA guidelines that came out, I think, on Friday, right? Friday? So lastly, council, remember that we're excited with the reopening of California. We're able to do our fireworks project, I mean, our fireworks program this year in person at the Brem complex, so we're excited to have upstream, and the public will be able to participate in that program. We're still going to have the high launch, as Sue indicated in her update to you at the last meeting, and so folks should be able to see that from a good portion of the entire town. I believe Mayor Protem will be joining us as host for that evening, as well as the mayor will be out of town. So I think that's all the updates today, Mayor. Thank you again for meeting on this special time, and be happy to answer any other questions if the council has any.
Great. All right. We'll go to councilmember comments. Councilmember Droods, anything tonight?
I really have nothing. I just want to say I'm excited about the new project, and I hope everybody has a great Fourth of July, and we'll see you at the celebration.
Very good. Councilmember Lombardo?
Pretty much ditto. Welcome aboard, Stephanie. We're hoping to interact with you in the future here on this project. It's really important to us, and we're very excited about having it completed on time, very critical for our funding. And Fourth of July, I'm glad we're back on track, and there's no special restrictions, right, at all for the meetings? Are concerts going to be able to go on schedule?
We will be able to conduct outdoor activities. We will have signage and information that is compliant with the guidelines that are provided by the Department of Public Health.
Very good. I'm excited. Let's get to it.
Councilmember Dennison?
I just want to thank staff and the rest of the council for putting this special meeting together tonight. I think it's important that we continue to move the project forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem. Schooler?
Nothing to add. I agree with all that.
All right. Thank you for attending. We will not have a meeting on July 6th. It will be canceled due to a lack of an agenda. Recreation staff, thank you for sending out satisfaction surveys. Participants in the water aerobics class first day, already got a survey sent out to them, so hopefully you get good participation. I think that's great, so that any of our guests that are going into recreation programs can give us some immediate feedback, and so corrections or adjustments can be made right away instead of hearing after the fact. So I think a satisfaction survey is really great. I think all the guests who fill those out will probably give you some really great kudos. So thank you for that. If there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and call it an evening.